Okay, good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of Monday, April 10th, 2017. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocci.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Vera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Mark Whitehead, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If Mark's here.
I do not see that he checked in.
Mr. Britton, would you do us the honors this evening?
Dear Heavenly Father, we're so thankful this time for the many blessings we enjoy. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to meet here in this City Council meeting. We're thankful for the freedoms we have. We ask for thy Spirit to be with the councilmembers this night, that they might continue to make decisions that bless the lives of the citizens of Series. Please bless all those that are in the Armed Forces and are dedicated to service here in this city. Please protect them from harm and accident. We say these things in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. We have two presentations this evening. The first is the Twomey Regional River Bluff Trip Update. Nathan?
Alrighty, there we go. Past the technical difficulty. Mayor and City Council, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to make a quick presentation to you about the Twomey River Regional Park. My name is Nathan Haux, and I am the Parks Planning and Development Manager for the City of Modesto, also the Administrator for the Twomey River Regional Park, JPA. So, wanted to just quickly go over some of the things that we've been doing. First of all, a quick overview. We have the vision of TRIP, which is, we want to develop Twomey River Regional Park, TRRP is TRIP, into a regional park with destination facilities. So what does that mean? What that hopefully means is that we have some facilities that can generate some revenue, some facility fees possibly, some leases possibly, and then possibly even bringing people to our area to spend nights in hotels and spend some money in our cities. So that's kind of the goal. We believe that the regional park can be a destination. It hasn't been in the past necessarily, but we think that it can be in the future. We want to develop and maintain Twomey River Regional Park in a fiscally sustainable manner. A couple of ways that we do that. One, we have a lot of volunteers that help us out. I don't know if you've heard of the 9 to 99, Operation 9 to 99. Chris Guptel is the leader of that, and he is a teacher at Davis High School in Modesto. And he has had some pretty impressive numbers in cleaning up basically the whole park. He's cleaned up, had 29 cleanups over the past few years, and he's cleaned up about 760 tires, 740 shopping carts, 276 tons of garbage that he's removed from the river, obviously with a lot of help, with a lot of volunteers that have helped him. And that number is 1,658 volunteers. So he has done an amazing job at cleaning up pretty much the whole seven miles of river, county, Modesto, whatever. He doesn't really care where it is, as long as the river's getting cleaned up. So, that's one of the main ways that we hope to be more fiscally sustainable. Also, we're looking at grants. We apply for quite a few grants for the park, and we get some, so that's another way where we can do that. The main goal of all this revenue generating and fiscal responsibility is to try to decrease the need for our local agencies that are currently providing a funding source to maintain the park. So, that's kind of our main vision that we have right now. This is just a quick overview of the park. You can kind of, it's probably hard to see on the screens, but it's basically seven river miles, starts at Mitchell Road, goes all the way down past Carpenter Road. It's over 500 acres of area, and then of course, there's a JPA between the City of Series, City of Modesto, and Stanislaus County. So I wanted to kind of go into quickly just a few projects that we're working on right now. Twomey River Regional Park Gateway, which is between Dry Creek and Highway 99 on the north side of the Twomey River. We've done quite a few bit of work in there, river habitat restoration, we've done a lot of trails. Right now, we're working on Phase Two construction, which if you drive across 99, you've probably seen off to the right, if you're heading towards Modesto, some construction going on down there. We've been on delay because of flooding right now, since half of our construction site's underwater, but hopefully we'll get back at it again once the water goes down a little bit. But, that is going to add some trail systems down in there. We're cutting, what you can see is filled with water when you look by, there is a backwater channel, which will fill with water like it is right now. It's doing exactly what it's supposed to do right now. And then we have one other project, which is River Overlook. You can kind of see it on this picture off to the bottom right. And it's basically, comes from that Riverwalk Trail and heads closer, gets people closer to the river without damaging the habitat. We have a grant for that project, and we'll be starting the design on that fairly soon. One of the most important projects to our goal is this project, the Remnant Dennett Dam Removal. The Dennett Dam, or the remnants of it, are in the river just downstream of the Ninth Street Bridge. And we have an agreement with the Twomey River Trust, and have collaborated with them. They have basically designed, done the construction documents to remove the dam. They have obtained, or are obtaining, all the permits, currently in the process. The project is fully funded now. They've obtained all the grant funds necessary to do the project, and we're hoping to get the remnant of the dam out of the river in the late summer 2017. So that's going to be dependent on the river level dropping some, because if it stays as high as it is now, we're not going to be able to do that. But, we're hoping that it'll be able to drop by late summer. The benefit of getting that out is it will encourage boating activities on the river, which obviously will help all the facilities along the Twomey River. There's quite a few downstream and upstream. I think you guys have a facility that you're working on at River Bluff. So all those facilities are going to be benefited by this project. It also will encourage fish habitat in the river. So, right now, the salmon have a hard time going upstream. With that dam out of the way, they basically can go all the way from, all the way up to La Grange Dam without having any barriers to them moving upstream. One other project which we have applied for a grant for is a boat launch by Nice Drive. This is kind of a quick picture of what that might look like, but that's right by John Thurman Field and Dryden Golf Course. I'm sure you guys are aware where those are. And this is a location where, you know, somebody could come, they could put in here, they could also take out here, they could go in at the Series River Bluff and come out at Nice Drive and then drive back, you know, if somebody picks them up or whatever. So this is, this is going to be a good location for that. It also provides a way for our fire and police to get into the river if they need to do emergency operations in the river, actually. So, it's an important piece to that puzzle of getting people boating on the river. You may or may not have heard of, the Stanislaus Youth Soccer League is working on some soccer fields. You can see to the left of this graphic, there's one soccer field that is basically on Belanita Park, which is a county park, and it's a current park. Just to the right of that, there's two grayed backfields. Those two fields are two fields that have been constructed by the Stanislaus Youth Soccer League under agreement with the Twomey River Regional Park. So they have constructed those two fields. The grass is growing right now. They're hoping to be able to start playing on them this fall. And so, currently, they have two fields. We have asked for a California Youth Soccer Grant to be able to construct three more fields, which you can see in the darker color on this slide, and some of the parking lot, so that we can have some ADA accessibility stalls and things like that that would be necessary. So that would get them up to like five or six fields in this one location, and they would be able to do a lot of their programming altogether, which they feel is an important thing for them to be able to do in order to keep the family-oriented recreation that they like. So this is, this is an important part of that, and this area was slated for soccer fields in our Twomey River Regional Park plan. Okay, so another project we're working on, but not a very exciting one for me, but tree trimming at the airport. It's an important one, though. The FAA has had some regulations, and they, the trees are growing up too high, and so some of them need to be cut down, some of them need to be trimmed, and the maintenance hasn't been done over the past 15 or 20 years that that needed to be done. So what we've done is we've looked at putting together a five-year phased plan, we, in order to make sure the airport can stay open and operate and all that, which benefits all the cities around, obviously. Phase one is nearly complete. The flooding stopped us, because we had about 200 trees or so that we had to, had to work on, we had to remove, basically. We, we had 240 we had to remove, we got 200 removed, and then the flooding came and stopped us, because we couldn't get into the area to work on them anymore. So we're probably going to come back either sometime this summer or in fall and finish up removing those last 40 trees. Then we're going to start working on Phase Two, which is pretty much almost all tree trimming. Then, each subsequent year, we'll work on the additional phases. Once we get through all five phases, the FAA will have completed everything the FAA required to make sure there's no restrictions on the airport for flying in and out. Obviously, we'll need to continue that maintenance in order to make sure that it doesn't become a problem in the future. Quickly, the trees that we're removing, there's mitigation required. So, this plan just quickly shows like, we have to plant basically 1,000 trees. These are kind of the areas we're anticipating planting. Some over by the soccer fields that were being constructed in the Carpenter Road area, some close to the boat launch area that we talked about by John Thurman Field and Dryden Golf Course, some at the Gateway Parcel, and then a few over in the Legion Park area where the American Legion Hall is. So, we're going to be, start working on planting those trees. Planted a few this spring, probably most of them will happen next fall. So, future plans. We have some future needs. Mancini Park on this side of the river, needs a renovation, has a lot of needs in the playground and other areas. Belanita Park over by the soccer fields also needs some renovation. American Legion Hall needs quite a few improvements, needs a new roof, the restrooms need to be ADA compliant, things like that. The kitchen needs to be renovated. And then, we have quite a few parking lots that need resurfacing soon. So those are kind of the future needs that we have of current facilities. We also have some projects that we're looking at for next steps to kind of further that vision of the Twomey River Regional Park, such as some improvements at the Legion Park area for some nature education, trying to get kids to learn about the river, and that, I think that's going to help educate the next generation to protect and preserve the river. Continued development of the Gateway Parcel. There's a lot of areas in the Gateway Parcel where special events and things like that can be held, which could attract a lot of people to our area, but we have to have grants and things for those, so we're going to continue doing that. We're going to extend the Riverwalk Trail, which is basically the main trail from the Gateway Parcel over to where the boat launch is, so that there's a connection with all those pieces, and people can have a nice long bike ride, or walk, or hike, or whatever. And then, we need to get a pedestrian bridge over Dry Creek to tie the Gateway Parcel with Legion Park. That one's going to require some discussions with Gallo, because their property is between those two, so we would need easement from them. And in the past, they have been open to that idea, but those talks need to happen. So that's just kind of a quick overview, and I just wanted to lastly just thank you guys for your support. I know you guys have supported us quite a bit in the past, and so we definitely appreciate that.
Okay. Are there any questions, Nathan? Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes. I'm sorry.
I'd like to ask a question. You had a lot about volunteers. HYLC still volunteering and working in the park?
Yes, the HYLC actually does two annual, two cleanups every year.
I know, because I did 13 years on the park commission.
Yeah. Yes, they do. And they have, they have a lot of young kids that come out and help out, so they're definitely an important piece to.
Every time.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have a proclamation declaring April 9th through the 15th, 2017, as National Library Week in the City of Series. Do we have someone from the library? Great. I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I'll bring it down. "National Library Week, April 9th through the 15th, 2007. Whereas reading and literacy and the freedom to explore are cornerstones of a free and democratic society. And whereas libraries support democracy through their commitment to providing equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status. And whereas literacy is a key to achieving personal success in school, in business, and in life. And whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative programming and through the power of information. And whereas librarians are trained, tech-savvy professionals, providing training and access to technology. And libraries offer 24/7 access to library services through online resources such as eBooks, e-magazines, downloadable audiobooks, music, and movies, online language instruction, and research databases. And whereas libraries partner with parents and caregivers to empower children to enter kindergarten with the knowledge and skills necessary for success in school and beyond. And whereas libraries continually grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, volunteers, and supporters in Stanislaus County are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Series does hereby proclaim April 9th through the 15th, 2017, as National Library Week in the City of Series, and urges everyone to visit their local library to take advantage of the wonderful resources available provided through the voter-approved 1/8 cent sales tax dedicated to the support of libraries."
Thank you so much for your support, and we at the Series branch of the Stanislaus County Library are working hard to continue to earn your support. Right now, the Series Library has up to five programs per week for children. We have preschool storytime, Wiggler Room Storytime, we have a stay and play, which is like a playdate at the library, we have music, movement, and educational toys for the children to use. We are adding more adult programming. We've got an adult book club, free knitting classes, and everything at the library is brought to you by the generous voter-supported 1/8 cent sales tax and by the Friends of the Series Library. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Citizens Communication to Council on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the Council on a non-agenda item?
Leonard Shepard, 2841 Fowler Road. The park is a wonderful place. It's, there are some people that come, that I'm aware of, every year, the first Saturday in June, and you'll see a bunch of guys wearing kilts and tossing tree trunks around and things like that. The Scottish community, every year, has their Highland Games at Twomey River Regional Park, and it's a great thing to see, and I guess maybe this year, the river might be up, have covered some of the areas we used to use, and we might be, have to move somewhere, unless the water goes down, which, I'm hoping the water stays up, just because I like to see it, all the water in the river, because that's the way it used to be. Not the way it used to be before the dam, but the way it used to be when they allowed the river to grow every year. We used to have a lake, and it was called San Joaquin Lake, and that's what, all that water would go down, and it wouldn't all go out into the, into the ocean during the winter times when we had the floods and no dams. It went, it filled the San Joaquin Valley from Sacramento to Bakersfield, and people actually rowed and sailed boats up and down the whole San Joaquin Valley in the 1850s and 60s. So, I like to see the river up, not specifically for the salmon, just I like to see the river up there. It's a lot of water, and it makes me feel good. They, the library, what an amazing place. Any library, any library gives people an open door to the rest of the world. I've been to China, I've been to Russia, I've been to South Africa, I've been all those places and never left home, because you can get books about any of them, not just written, but pictures and so forth. And now, with the internet, you can go anywhere, even out in space. So the library is a great thing, and I hope the county, citizens don't ever stop paying that, that tax, because it's important. And, summer's coming, so let's enjoy it while we can. Bye.
Cue. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Council on a non-agenda item? If so, please come up to the podium and state your name.
Hi, my name is Laura McCullough, and I live by Somerina Park, and we would like to ask for more patrol in the area of Hemi Bird and the park. It's kind of been an ongoing thing for us for the last three years. In June, we had our house broke into, and a year later, we had a neighbor dispute, and since then, we've had our windows shot out, we've had our car shot, we've had restraining orders, we've had meetings with the police, we've had calls, we've had different things done, and every time we call, it's like, we'll be there when we can. I have one online report that never was received to the Drug Task Force. I got emails six months later saying they were no longer in business. I got two emails online that were lost because of technical difficulties somewhere that aren't registered anywhere. We're constantly calling, my neighbor and I, we both have restraining orders on one of our neighbors. This December, I went to Turlock to look for new jewelry, and I found jewelry that was missing since June of 2014. I worked with a detective, and it's come clear that the jewelry that was pawned was actually related to one of our neighbors who is always now driving fast on our street over at the park. I've turned in 30 files of drug transactions that are totally visible. The father constantly is grabbing his crotch, trying to get us to do things. It's, we would just like to ask for a little more support in our area. It's, three years is a long time, and it'll be three years this June, that, you know, we hate to sell our house, we've lived there for almost 40 years, our kids were raised there. This isn't the city that is fun anymore. We would just like more support if you could give that to us. Thank you.
Can you touch base with your, or with Chief Smith? Can we just?
I have to give you a note. I have to leave. Hours of work. But with resources.
Okay.
We're currently doing this now, all across the board, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Council on all a non-agenda item? Okay, with that, we will move to appointments to Boards and Commissions. We have none this evening. Conflict of Interest Declaration. Is there anyone on the Council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar items or new business? Okay, hearing none, we will move to Consent Calendar. All matters listed on the Consent Calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual councilmember or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be acted upon, will be accepted, excuse me, enacted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the Council that would like one of the consent calendar items pulled for further discussion? All right, anyone in the audience? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Council for direction.
Move to adopt item 1, 2, 3, 3A, 4, 5, 6, 7. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocci.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thanks. We have no unfinished business this evening, no public hearing. We have one new business item, Resolution Number 2017-035, Selecting Alternative Number One, Diverging Diamond, as the locally preferred alternative for the Proposed Service Mitchell State Route 99 Interchange Project. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. This evening, we have an update regarding the Service Mitchell Interchange, and we'll kind of refresh the Council as to where we at on the project, an overview of the two primary alternatives that are being considered through Caltrans, and look for Council's direction of the locally preferred alternative. So the background here, for those of you who have been around the city for a while, the original concept for the Mitchell Interchange was what was referred to as the Mitchell Road Couplet. You can see there, Mitchell and Service, the idea that Mitchell Road was going to be kind of two separate facilities, a northbound and a southbound, and then a new interchange there at Mitchell Road. 2002 Project Study Report was kicked off, and studied a number of alternatives. This was, this alternative, the Mitchell Road Couplet, was determined pretty quickly to not be feasible from a traffic operation standpoint, so moved on to a number of other considerations. Four primary alternatives were discussed. They eliminated about 20 alternatives at that point in time, narrowed it down to four. Of those four alternatives, in 2009, Alternative Four was considered the locally preferred alternative. This had the off-ramps basically going right into where the future Walmart facility Um, this had the off-ramps basically going right into where the future Walmart facility would be. Um, at this point in time, in two thousand and nine, we were having some significant difficulties with Caltrans. They were very afraid of the constructability of this project and this, uh, layout as it's currently shown. Obviously, the economy was in bad shape and a number of other factors per council direction, uh, project, um, moving forward was stopped. Came back to life a little bit later in two thousand and eleven, as we kind of dusted it off the shelf, started to work with Caltrans again, looking at the different alternatives to see whether the alt-four could be saved or if there were other options that may be more viable. Summer two thousand and twelve, council approved the revised design contract, or really the, um, project approval and environmental document with the existing consultant, Nolte, and that moved forward, um, looking at the, the previously considered alternatives and seeing if we could get over the hurdles with Caltrans at that point in time. Fortunately, Caltrans came to the conclusion that alt-four would not be viable, so they moved forward, um, and we, as a team, between us and Caltrans, uh, came up with some new alternatives. Again, looked at another ten or so alternatives to see if we could find another solution that would be, uh, more beneficial to the area and meet the project purpose and need, uh, for what we were looking to do. At that point in time, in the two thousand thirteen range, we did come up with two alternatives, the diverging diamond, uh, and the Mitchell interchange project. So, we'll speak about both of those, um, here in a little more detail. So, we'll start with alternative two, which is the Mitchell Road inter, interchange. Uh, so in essence, Mitchell Road entertain, in interchange, um, is in essence the same configuration as what exists today. The movements on and off of Highway ninety-nine are, um, in basically the same location, although a couple key considerations change. If you look there on the bottom of the screen, the off-ramp for southbound ninety-nine, so if you're coming from Modesto, getting off to take Mitchell Road, that movement would then go underneath the freeway, so you're looking at a new structure there. Um, it would come to one intersection where the southbound off-ramp, the southbound on-ramp, as well as the northbound off-ramp would all come to one signalized intersection. That would be a triple left-hand movement there, a little different than anybody here in this area has seen. Pretty significant cost to construct that, and that's one of the challenges with this alternative. Uh, this was an alternative that was created by Caltrans. Um, this is, has never been the city's, as from a staff perspective, our preferred alternative due to, one, the constructability difficulties, uh, as well as the, um, access challenges for those properties along Mitchell Road and the ultimate economic development impacts that that may have. As you'll notice, a solid line in Mitchell Road from the freeway up to Service Road, that represents a solid median where there would not be any cross-traffic allowed, um, across there to provide economic development, activity, and access to those properties. So, that's one of the significant challenges. It also doesn't improve the access to the west side of, of the freeway. You still would have to go the same route, which would be northbound on, uh, Mitchell, and to make a left on Service to get west of ninety-nine. So, those are the challenges, kind of summarized here. Um, the functionality is in essence the same. Um, it does fix some of the existing, uh, State Route ninety-nine problems, although Caltrans would really like us to fix for them. Um, when the last time we spoke about these alternatives, we were a little further behind in the analysis of the costs. Uh, we've since determined that this alternative, alt-two, is actually more expensive. In our original, uh, analysis, it was shown to be a little less expensive, but again, as we dug into the constructability challenges, if you think of State Route ninety-nine with six lanes, three lanes in each direction, to build this facility, in essence, have to pick the whole freeway up and move it over, and then build, uh, two new structures underneath it as you're providing access for six lanes of traffic. A very, very complex construction and a very expensive, uh, construction. For those of you who've driven northbound ninety-nine a few years back on French Camp exit there on ninety-nine, just between Stockton and Manteca, um, that was a, and the way it would likely be constructed, a very high, um, false road where you kind of build everything up, build the new structure, flip it over and do on the other side. Very difficult construction. And again, as I mentioned, it doesn't provide access to the west side of ninety-nine. So, on to alternative one, the diverging diamond. This is currently the staff, um, preferred alternative, as well as what council has indicated, um, a previous study session optioned that this is the preferred alternative. Um, as you see, the primary change here is that we get all movements at Service Road, so you can get off and on the freeway and go any of the eight directions from State Route ninety-nine at Service Road, keeping two of the primary access points at Mitchell Road, being the northbound off-ramp and the southbound on-ramp. So, if you're going to Turlock or coming from Turlock, those two, two movements are still available at Mitchell Road. So, since the last time we've spoken, uh, on this particular project, obviously, we've come a lot further on the overall, uh, constructability and design parameters, have made a lot of progress with Caltrans and the viability. A couple things have changed in terms of access. If you see kind of to the left hand of the screen, the Bricket Court access has changed a little bit, um, so that it accesses off of Don Pedro rather than previously El Camino, um, and refined the overall footprint of the project to where, um, again, now that it is a, the cheaper alternative between the two primary alternatives. So, some of the details about the diverging diamond, it's obviously a, a little unique in its design, um, but it's not new. Um, but like I said, it's very, very common, very prevalent in Europe, um, currently, and the last time we had this conversation, it was about forty. In the last couple of years, they've built a significant number of these. There's eighty-one currently in operation. You can see the different colors on that map showing you different stages, uh, in, uh, blue being planning, uh, the, the purple, magenta being the design, the yellow being in construction, and the green, uh, the open locations. Nearest one for us would be in Reno, Nevada, near the airport, um, just south of Interstate eighty, off of the five-eighty. Uh, there's a, uh, a diverging diamond there. I know Councilmember Rhino, uh, has driven that, um, and won't tell you her husband's comments on it, but, although she has driven, uh, that, and so, uh, for those of you who are in Reno near the airport, it would be a, an opportunity to see how one functions. That's, like I said, the, the closest to us. Currently, Caltrans is evaluating a number of them in California. Um, uh, City of Manteca is looking at a diverging diamond on the Union Road interchange, and they are a little bit ahead of us. Their, um, design is a little simpler than ours. Our complexity is related to the railroad, as well as keeping those existing movements on Mitchell Road make for our design to be a little more complex than what Manteca is facing, uh, there. So, we are moving forward, and a couple of the reasons why this makes sense, not just because it's innovative, but, um, primarily because of those constraints that we have on design, um, we're trying to find ways to move as much traffic as you can through that interchange, um, as safely as you can. This just kind of illustrates, um, kind of the typical movements on a traditional interchange. There on the top box where you have conflict points, where cars are, are crossing in front of the path of another car. Um, on our traditional design, there's twenty-six locations of conflict. Under the diverging diamond, you only have fourteen, significantly, uh, reducing both the number of accidents and the severity of accidents. Um, primarily, that's related to the design speed that's a little slower, and you also get, um, less, uh, broadside type of accidents where someone's running a stop sign or a, in this case, a signal, which again leads to accident severity being completely reduced. Again, this particular interchange design has a significant increase in efficiency, providing for the ultimate design capacity for the year twenty forty, ultimate traffic forecasted through our general plan, uh, as well as being a little cheaper. And one of the key things that it does is providing us that direct access to the west of ninety-nine. As we've discussed in our general plan, uh, update, uh, getting access to what is now being studied as a regional commercial to the west side of ninety-nine, south of Service, would be significantly increased and enhanced with, uh, this diverging diamond concept, the alternative one. So, as I mentioned, staff is recommending alternative number one. As we move forward in the environmental document, um, we would be able to put that resolution from the council, as well as a cover letter indicating what the preferred alternative is, and that would be, um, move forward, what we are hoping for in June of this year, uh, that the environmental document would be circulated. We'd start the formal construction, uh, documents, uh, getting a design in two thousand and eighteen with a target construction date of mid-two thousand and twenty. Uh, it would take about three years to completely construct the project. Um, as has been discussed, total project cost is somewhere in the hundred million dollar range, um, funded with a number of, um, items. The first one, we're currently using a redevelopment agency bond proceeds for the design of what we're doing so far. We're also matching that with traffic impact fees, uh, measure L, um, the half-cent sales tax that was just began, uh, being collected in April is funding around thirty million dollars towards this project. And with the most recent passage of SB one, well, waiting for the governor's signature, we expect him to sign it the next week, um, that would free up some potential state monies as well, and there's other federal opportunities to help fund the, the full cost of the project. So, with that, I look for if any questions you may have, and...
Vice Mayor Klein?
Can you go back to conflict points, please?
Yes.
Okay, so, the diverging diamond that you're talking about would have fourteen conflict points. Is there any data or anything like that that, because those aren't, like, when you're going, it's easy to say northbound in the right-hand lane, and all of a sudden now you got to cross over to the left-hand side. Is there any data on wrong-way drivers, uh, or anything like that, and...
It's significantly reduced on the diverging diamond, although it feels a little counterintuitive. Um, but the, the data shows, under the diverging diamond, it makes it, the real problem with wrong-way drivers is people getting wrong-way on the freeway. And so, under the diverging diamond, that activity is really difficult to move, to make that movement, to get the wrong-way on the freeway. But even the wrong-way on, in our case, Service Road, um, is significantly reduced. And so, the, the data to date, the newest, or the oldest interchange in, um, United States is two thousand and nine, and the data continues to show that, um, the accident, both severity and numbers are both, uh, significantly reduced than from a traditional interchange.
Now, are you talking just because of the conflict points, or also, um, going down and, uh, and exit on an off-ramp? Is that included in the data?
Correct, yeah. Overall accident rates are lower with the diverging diamonds than they are with, uh, traditional interchanges. And as I mentioned, the severity of those accidents are, are, are less as well.
Any other questions? None? Okay, this time, I'll open it up to the public if anyone would like to comment on this item. Okay, I'll bring it back to council for direction.
Well, I do have, I do have another question, and basically it is, you know, we're going through the general plan update, and so, with the only access to the west side of the freeway service over by Lucas and stuff, uh, would only be, and I can't see the name of that street that's down there, um, is that would be the only access if we do develop that out there as commercial?
What's, what's the question?
Oh, it's supposed to be Moffett.
The only...
He wants, his question is, is what other access points will be to that west side of the commercial other than Service Road?
Service Road is the primary access, yeah. But you'd be able to get off the freeway at Service Road. Today, you have to go to Mitchell. So, you'd actually be able to get off the freeway both northbound and southbound to head west on Service Road. Moffett is the first road to the west of, of ninety-nine. That would be improved and expanded in our, our current, uh, general plan. That, that roadway would be a signalized intersection.
Okay. Councilman Lane?
Well, before we pass a motion, I just want to thank staff. I know you guys have worked real hard on this, and some of us have been here since it started, so, um, it's good to see that this project's moving along and, and, you know, hopefully that we'll get all the funding and, and we will be able to start this in, in, uh, what, twenty, twenty?
Twenty twenty is the target for construction. The, the real key milestone is the environmental document, getting that circulated in June of this year. If we can hit that, then, uh, that really gets us teed up for the, you know, going after the additional funding that we need to, to secure the rest of the project.
Good. Well, with that, I would like to make a motion, uh, for resolution number two thousand seventeen dash oh thirty-five.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember De Rosset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. We will move to the discussion items. We have one item, water system update. Jeremy?
Good evening, council. Tonight, we're going to talk about the water system. So, Stanislaus Regional Water Authority, sustainable groundwater management, um, overview of the water system, water quality, and some conservation that we've been doing the last couple of years. So, as you know, the, the cities of Turlock and Series have entered into a joint powers of authority agreement with Turlock Irrigation District, City of Turlock and City of Series to develop a surface water project. Waters to be, um, pulled out of the, the Twalome River at Fox Grove. Project is, um, moving quite swiftly, actually. The water quality sampling, we've done eight to ten events out of the river. The, the sampling that we've done to date has taken the decision tree for the treatment process from about eight to ten different types of treatment down to two. The wet well is, about fifty percent of, of it is designed, and with the wet well is the structure that's going to pull the water out of the Twalome River and deliver it to the treatment plant. There's, um, about a quarter of a mile distance between those two points. We got to get it there. We've had lengthy discussions about funding and rates, the hydraulic analysis to integrate into the existing systems. Um, for the Series system is, our goal with it is to, to build and, design, build and install a two-million gallon storage tank out at River Bluff Park. We have a couple of improvements to the water system, large pipelines down Hatch Road to get it in, and then be integrated into the system. Pretty, pretty easy for us. And then we've done some pretty extensive preliminary analysis of the right-of-way. As you can imagine, running some pipelines through county easements and county roads is pretty extensive. Not as much for us as it is Turlock, but it's still a feat. And then the environmental, and we have to work through the secret documentation to try to get the water out of the river with the water rights, and, uh, FERC re-licensing of Don Pedro's played a part of that as well. Sustainable groundwater. So, in January, we developed and formed the joint powers of authority with fourteen agencies to become a sustainable groundwater agency. Uh, we did meet the June, or, yeah, it's June of two thousand and seventeen deadline for that. So, now our next goal is the, as the technical advisory committee is to develop a groundwater sustainable plan. Um, that plans to detail, you know, the extraction of water, um, across the entire county, or, I'm sorry, across the entire basin. So, as you can imagine, with fourteen agencies, um, all vying for that water, it's going to be interesting. This is just a simple chart. I've shown this time and time again. Um, our two thousand and sixteen numbers were one-point-nine billion gallons compared to, uh, three-point-eight in, uh, two thousand and seven with a forty-nine percent reduction. Um, water quality, we have twelve wells in service, five of them are offline for water quality purposes, arsenic, nitrate, uh, uranium. We took over four thousand water samples last year. So, TCP, we've had, we've talked about TCP in the past a little bit, and the, the rule from the state water board is going to be in effect in January of two thousand and eighteen. So, what that means to us is that we have to start doing quarterly monitoring next year. Our first quarter samples, we're going to have, uh, five wells that are going to exceed that new MCL, which is approximately forty-three percent of our supply. Um, three of the wells have detectable levels of DBCP in them. Uh, DBCP, right now, the, the state standard is point-two parts per billion. We're running about a point-one, point-five. It's been bouncing, and it's actually come a little higher. Uh, and the most feasible treatment for TCP and DBCP as well as a granular activated carbon tank. So, on the corner of Booth and Hatch, uh, we have a well that's sitting there on the corner, and there's a large round tank on site. That's what they would look like. Um, so, the city, one of the other, uh, interesting constituents that we're dealing with right now is this total trihalomethanes and halocetic acids, and what they are is the disinfection byproduct of chlorine. And when you mix that chlorine with a disinfection byproduct with a carbon source, you get high TTHM and HA5s. Typically, they go together, they rise together. We, we've been chlorinating now for three or four years, five years, I think it is, um, and we haven't had any issues. What's interesting is, is that since two thousand and sixteen, um, our halocetic acid numbers have re-increased tremendously. Um, and as you see here, two thousand and seventeen, for our first quarter monitoring has gone up pretty high. Uh, the problem that, that I'm having is that we don't have a carbon source, so we're having a really hard time trying to figure out, um, why we're having this issue. We've got a couple of consultants that are helping us. I've done split samples to labs, um, I've got MIDs helping me quite a bit. We're having some issues in trying to find the problem with this one. Average annual static water levels. So, what's interesting here is, is that the water level, the static water level in the ground, sixty-four feet for two thousand and sixteen, and if you look back to two thousand and one, it was sixty-four, sixty-five feet. So, the static water level's the same today as it was fifteen years ago. As you can see, in two thousand and eight, there was a dip because of the increase in pumping. We get that. In two thousand and eight, with the increase in pumping, our, our pumping water level was a hundred and seventeen feet. That means that when the pumps turn on, the rate of pump is at a hundred and seventeen feet of water. That's where the... That's where the depth to the water is from the groundwater than from the surface. 2016, our elevation was a hundred and fifty-seven feet. So there's a lot, there's a lot to be said about these issues that we're having with water quality and these haloacetic acid issues due to the pumping levels. What's happening is, is that when the pumping water levels drop so much, we have six wells to where we call, what we call falling water. What that means is these wells are just, if you can envision, it's a straw drilled down through the earth, and there's perforations where you want to pull your water from. Well, because our pumping water level's at a hundred and fifty feet, these perforations are above those, above that aerated area. So we're, we're trying to figure out and determine if the haloacetic acid increase is due to that falling water, therefore the carbon source. So on April seventh, the governor said the drought's over. So what's interesting is that the, the lakes are full, so everybody that's receiving surface water for drinking water purposes has an abundant supply. But as you can see here, drought's not over, and it's going to take us years to get this back. I mean, this is, this just didn't happen overnight. This is going to be years to get that, you know, a hundred and fifty-seven back to even a hundred and twenty feet. And until then, you know, we need to develop and/or look to the future with the surface water program for a reliable, consistent water source, is the goal. This chart here, we've produced this a number of times, as you can see. So there's a green line over on the left, and for the first month since we've been reporting to the water, to the state water board for our water conservation goals, monthly we report to them, and for the first month, last month, for the month of March, we, we had, actually had an increase compared to the previous, to the same month of the previous year. So for example, in March of 2016, our reduction was twenty-six percent compared to 2013, and in March here last month, our reduction was actually twenty-three percent. So our goal overall, through the stress test through the state water board, has been thirteen percent. So we're above it. So there's no threats there. It's just interesting that we've, we've come to a point where we don't have any more decreases. Every, every month has always been a reduction, and we've always said that at some point, it's going to level out. Well, it's looking like it's starting to level out. And I know that in March, in March of 2016, we had 1.1 million gallons of usage on our irrigation accounts, and this, last month, we were at 3.1. So there's been, there was a big increase in the irrigation accounts. This is just a map of the, of the state. So as you can see, in April of 2015, the, the dark red and the red is the severity of the drought compared to April of 2017, where it's, you know, just a few areas of Courtesy notices, you know, we've had a, it's interesting, is we've had a hundred and seventy-one percent increase. It's, it's been a hundred and seventy-one percent of an increase in our rebate program since 2013, since we put it into place. And a lot of it's attributed to staff going out and just knocking on doors. You know, we've done a lot to push the rebate program. It's hard, the community itself is hard to get engagement. You know, we've got seventeen percent of the residents signed up for the web portal. The web portal's a tool that, that can automatically notify residents of water leaks, of high consumption, whatever they want that to be, you know, if they exceed their targeted amounts, whatever the case is. And on a daily basis, we get phone calls as to, "I was never told." And it's interesting, because I have these conversations that, "You never told me, you never told me, you never told me." We've spent countless hours in mailings and, and the rebate programs, and it's just hard to get that level of engagement. One of the areas that we would like to improve on a little bit is the, the turf program, the turf rebate. So the turf rebate program, since it's been in place, we've done forty-seven single-family residential accounts. Of those forty-seven accounts, we're estimating that there's been a ninety-one-thousand-gallon annual usage savings per account. The average use, the average reduction, or, I'm sorry, the average turf rebate has been twelve-hundred square feet. Right now, we currently offer a dollar for every five-hundred square feet, up to five-hundred square feet. What we'd like to do is to increase that to some number with some help from you to, to try to, to get more, to get more residents involved in wanting to do the turf rebate, because that's been one of the complaints that I've gotten, is that, and it's an expense for them to go to, to remove their turf to put in a dryscape. And the same tune is, is if we can get, you know, three-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-and-fifty customers to, to take us up on this, there's a huge savings. And in the future, with the surface, the surface water program, I mean, without getting into the weeds too much on the actual numbers, is we're looking at doubling the rates. And our goal here is to, we know that's coming because of the capital investment that we need to do for the program. But in future years, we'd like to really try to figure out how to not increase any more than we have to. And I, I feel that the turf rebate is a way to do it. If we can target these accounts, get more buy-in from the residents to get these accounts to help us to conserve more, you know, that keeps the rates down, it keeps pumping capacity down, it keeps future treatment costs down, because we're going to end up operating a conjunctive-use system where we're going to have to continue to operate the wells as well. And with that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Jeremy. Very informative. Any questions?
I've got a question for you. You know, you go back to this JPA that you're taking samples at Fox Grove?
Sure.
Does the, the river, river level and the flow of the river have an impact on the readings of your samples?
Absolutely. So right now, is because of the high flows in the river, we're getting high, very high level of total organic carbon, dissolved organic carbon levels. So what that does is, is that even though this is an unusual event, I mean, it happened in ninety-seven, it's happened a few times. What we're trying to do is to figure out those high levels, once you get over two milligrams per liter of total, total organic carbon, it takes you into a different threshold for treatment. So what we're trying to do is, is what's the most robust treatment that we can get, although recognizing that this is an unusual event. So it's been, it's been helpful because of the high levels in the river and the discharges, the, the total organic carbon levels are coming down now because the amount of water has been sustainable. It's the same quantity, I think they're running at twelve-thousand cubic feet per second, somewhere in there. So it's been sustainable, and it's very high, but it's starting to lower because of the, the solids and all the, the particles that are floating in the water, basically, the carbon source, has drifted out or is not even, nonexistent at this point. It's back down to about two, where it got up to four, four-point-five.
So with doing that, wouldn't it be safe to say that if you plan for the worst, it's easier, easier to shut that part of the filtration system off, then trying to add it later on, if we have another year like we've had this year, then to build it and try to?
Yeah, so the, the goal here is to build a treatment facility that is sustainable for all, okay? But we also recognize that building it to the, to the worst-case event might not be economically feasible. So the treatment process that we're actually entertaining allows us to flow water at a slower rate through the process, yet removing the total organic carbon and the, the enhanced disinfection byproducts that it's going to incur. The nicest, the, the flexibility we have here is that these high events are always during the wintertime where we have low demands. Right now, we're running about three to four MGD, to our, during the summertime, we're running, you know, eight to nine. So by doing that, we're allowed to, or we're able to design for the worst case. See, what we're trying to do is, is to cut this peak down. We can cut this twenty-sixteen peak down even lower, especially during the wintertime as well, then that lowers the demand on the system. So we can get the demands to, to the city of Series, our goal is to one to two MGD, a million gallons per day during the wintertime. Then the, the plan will operate around the clock without any problems.
Thank you. Councilmember Rhino?
On the turf replacement, when someone does take out their yard and then they replace it with drought-tolerant plants, and you called it a dryscape, someone from the city goes out and inspects that, correct?
We do befores and afters.
Okay. And what are the guidelines for the dryscape? They can't just put rock and two trees, can they?
No. So there's, we have several, we have several options. You know, we've had residents that have done the turf, we've had residents that have done rock in areas, as long as there's a permeable layer down underneath, we've allowed residents to put like two to three inches of bark down, and they'll put, as lo, and as long as there's a permeable material underneath, and as long as they'll have, we're looking for plantings about every four to six feet, bark. We don't want an, an open front yard.
Because I don't know if these people got a rebate or not, but they have just rock and two trees, and that's definitely not what I would want to see.
Correct.
Driving down a street.
So I had one, I had one last year that was out off of V-Scape that I went out and talked to the homeowner, because when we, when we meet with them prior to them doing the rebate, we give them all the literature, the information, we show them a whole bunch of designs, give them ideas and options, planting materials, all of it. They did just that. They pulled everything out of their front yard, they put down a permeable material, they put down white rock, and they put a plant in the center of it, and they wanted their money. And I said, "No." So that, I doubt happened.
Okay. And the other question I have is water guidelines for new construction?
Mm-hmm.
I know I've brought this up before, and I don't think we've modified it, but it seems to me that when we're building new homes or even commercial, why aren't we changing what we require and we're requiring the drought tolerant in the front yard?
It's already required by state law currently, so it, state law trumps any new home. I mean, we haven't had much new home, but any new home has to have a drought tolerant and really aren't even allowed grass in the front yard any longer.
So if somebody comes in to build a subdivision, we're not going to hand out the water guidelines for single-family residential?
We already have guidelines, and they will have to be updated for our next subdivision.
Okay.
Because the, again, the state law trumps anything that we have currently.
So are we going to update those?
As we get time, yes.
Okay. And then, don't we have them for commercial projects?
Yes.
Or have those been updated as well? But we're going to update those, too.
Correct. Hoping that, the timing, what we're hoping for is to get our general plan updated, and then we'll be going through and updating all of that information.
And if we, if we increase the rebate, does that come from water, the water fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? At this time, I'll open up to the public. Anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay. With that, Jeremy, I just want to thank you for the information. Councilmember Lane and I sit on the committee for the surface water project, and as Jeremy had mentioned, although, you know, we will be asking for rate increases, we see it as something that is instrumental, that we have to have, so that we can take the surface water and blend it with our groundwater and, and give us a, a more reliable and better water supply system moving forward. So it's an interesting project, it's, we're hoping to move it as quickly as we can, but nothing moves faster than a snail's pace when it comes to projects like these. So with that, thank you, Jeremy. And at this time, we'll move on to council member referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, hearing none reports. Is there anyone on the council that would like to report anything? I have nothing this evening.
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Nothing.
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 Okay, with that, Ms. Dean?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to report that we've completed our recruitment for the revenue and customer service position, and Andrea Magdaleno, who currently does payroll, has been promoted to that position.
Great.
Thank you.
Tom?
Nothing, mayor.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, mayor. Reminder, our centennial committee continues to meet. We have another meeting this Wednesday, a few I see in the audience, and we look forward to seeing them. We are making some good progress on planning for our hundred-year celebration next year in 2018. So that meeting is here in the community center. If anybody's interested, it is an open meeting. You can join us at 5:30 on Wednesday. There's also a, I've been advised, the South Monesto MAC, there's a meeting this Thursday evening. As the council recalls, we had a little challenge with some sewer issues up in our kind of north area of our boundary, and we've been asked to attend that meeting, so staff will be attending that meeting on Thursday of this week. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank former mayor, Senator Canelo, for his efforts in standing tall for SB one. I know none of us like to pay additional taxes, but what Senator Canelo was able to do of securing funding for the ACE train to Series is a significant item for us, and we'll be bringing back an information item back to council to show, kind of the reminder of that concept plan that was approved back in 2015 as they moved forward on the ACE project. So I just wanted to let him know those efforts were definitely noticed, and that provides a significant funding source for the city that will be instrumental for the implementation of our general plan, as well as the build-out of our downtown.
Tom? Daryl? Tracy? Okay. Jeremy? McCoy? All right, Supervisor DiMartini?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. With that, we will adjourn to closed session, is that correct? And then after that, we will be back for our regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Monday, April 24th at 7:00 PM.